No, you can stand before everyone, but we've already signed our website.
Those are the...
The... So it has...
One packet for the water.
You're ready. Do I have to sign this?
Yes. The reason why the... We'll call it on me. Our current one. That's right. Very good.
Well, if you ever know the... Thank you. Thank you.
And now just move on to the...
(laughing).
(inaudible). It was not a good day today.
It does?
(inaudible). So I know I'm just a bad man. Of course, I'm a bad man. I remember the three side again was still out on the floor. So it was my one over the door.
They tried to bring it down, but then... But it's gone.
See, that's not tall. Um, yeah.
But...
See, I was... I think it's scary water.
Yeah. Yeah. It's like...
I love it. It's scary.
It would. But I think... It should... I was gonna say power. It's scary. It didn't go. It's much scarier. It's scary. It's scary. It's scary. Yeah.
Same one.
Actually, that's a little weird. How about Billy?
I've heard it. I thought it was.
Cheer. I only have like three to say.
Yeah, there's only like...
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it wasn't that... Next, next being...
Boy, I'm gonna... Stayed, I guess, I sure did last year.
(laughing).
I'm sorry, I'm... I'm trying to...
Oh, wow. First one I heard.
Yeah, it's crazy.
No, you were not.
It was like our honor. I think it's pretty hard. All the seeds were... I was like... It's sour. Yeah. Pretty cool.
Hang on.
Such an important... There is one.
They've heard me all the time.
Yeah.
Sure. So...
So just by the... Actually, I thought I'd give this... I think you are...
You know, I'm like, I want to... Get outside.
Yeah.
I'm saying, oh, these things are just very... They're very... I'm talking about... You know, I'm just... The other one is high school.
So... You want...
The one with the printers possibly? Will you let just cross out printer just to be saved? Well, we might have to have a break time.
It might have to be, yeah. Um... If you're recording.
You bring it in. Right? It's what a good president does, a delegate.
Have you given anything from last week to... Leslie? For... I guess this is right.
No, I haven't seen it. For two?
Um, right. Because it's only a thesis I wrote and I can do it.
Oh.
But while we're... In that last... So your paper's...
No.
Um... Because I... It's working.
That's it. You're always careful.
What's... It's two feet of... It's...
Yeah.
Yeah. Where's she going?
For real.
Oh, I'm sure she did.
At least go. So... So I see. Hold it. Very good.
Yeah.
Oh, refund.
I keep it in my house.
It's been a half a year. He's high on...
Your mouse. Your mouse, how do you keep it? Like...
Everyone else?
Straight on, sir. Holy cow. Thanks, Billy. Thank you. I don't want to... I don't want to... I can see that.
We don't think... I think...
I tried these, and I don't like them.
I still don't like here because I have to do it. Because like you have to seriously have to push yourself to do more.
I mean, it's not... It's all makes it small.
Especially if it wasn't that much. Yeah, this is... It's well...
My mouse. It won't work. My mouse.
Where's this thing?
It's gonna keep it real...
I don't like my mouse, too.
I'm not sure.
Everything's crap.
Yeah, that's a whole question for...
Yeah. It's a whole...
Yeah, it's...
I got one on the truck.
I am... Ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. First up is additions to and approval of the agenda.
I have one addition to the agenda. Item E on our new business, seat hog register thing agreement. Motion to approve as amended, sir.
All right, we have a motion of seconds. Any discussion on that? A favor?
I have one.
Any opposed? All right, agenda approved as amended. Next on the agenda is visitors to be heard. Guidelines are members of the public may speak over this item. On any topic not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the council can step up to the podium. You have a two-minute limit. Anybody want to do that? Rosie?
I don't need this to walk, but it's in case somebody you guys... (laughing).
Fair enough.
Uh, I have a couple of requests. I guess I just think that I want to bring out. Uh... I, I, I loaded some garbage something a long time ago. And I made a mistake in leaving a letter with my name on it. And I got, I dumped it off. I had a bunch of branches, a bunch of plywood, a bunch of two-by-fours. And anyhow, the, uh... Local authorities called me and said, "Get your so-and-so down here and pick it up." So I did. I went right down and picked it up. Uh... I just got home not very long. And, uh... I got, I got a call from the cities saying that there wouldn't be a thousand-dollar penalty for dumping that. Uh, I did talk to a city council guy then. He was on the city council. Brock Robson, I can't say his name. Uh... I told him that I had gotten penalized and I dumped the garbage or not the garbage, but the stuff that wasn't supposed to be there. And I was told to deal with her and pick it up, which I did right away. But then he said, "Well, I wouldn't think that you would be charged uh, a thousand dollars." But he says, "I don't know what the rule is." And I would think if you, if you picked it up, I would think there would be some adjustment. I know there was another guy, I don't know the name, but I was told that before I did it, some guy dumped some stuff. And he never picked it up. And I don't think he was dumb enough to leave a letter with his name on it. And so I don't know if he was ever charged. Last I heard, he was not. But I was, I made a partial payment. And I was wondering if, if there could be any adjustment from you guys on that.
Maybe it ordered states of the, it's a thousand-dollar fine?
Yeah, I'm looking for the... It, it, it's a fine for unauthorized dumping. It doesn't necessarily, um, if, if we were to um, have such a case where somebody dumped, didn't pick it up, uh, what we would do is we'd do the, more likely to do unauthorized dumping fine as well as the abatement costs. In this case, we wouldn't do abatement costs if it was picked up.
Can you clarify, Nate, was it picked up?
Sorry, I don't know. Yes.
All of those have...
Year.
Oh, a year ago.
Yeah. Was it your household trash?
No, I mean, there was, there was a letter in there. It wasn't trash. It was a bunch of branches, a bunch of plywood, some short bunch of two-by-fours.
Well, I, I, I don't think even dump were two-by-fours and plywood over there, do you? Uh, if it's untreated, I love where I think can, I'd, I'd go back and look at the permit, but... I've just never... We have a clear sign there. That's what you can and can't do.
Yeah, I've just never seen the signs. Those tree branches and grass and don't say anything about construction. So...
I, I didn't...
I don't think we advertise for it, but I think, I think as long as it doesn't have hardware in it, I think it's okay.
I saw the sign the second time I wanted to pick it up. There's a sign there. But dumping, but that's what it was like. It wasn't garbage, but there was a letter in there.
So there was a little garbage?
I would, I, if you want to call it one letter. But otherwise, it was lumber, plywood, bunch of tree branches, and about a half a pickup load. And I picked, I picked it all up.
So the letter could have just gone out of track or something?
I suppose.
How much is the partial payment?
I have to go look. I think it was two fifty.
I paid two fifty, I think.
And then did you have to pay to have it dumped somewhere else?
Pardon?
Did you pay to have it dumped somewhere else?
No, I took it home and dumped it in a big hole and buried it. I had, I had a hole done.
So why did you dump it in our dump in the first place?
Well, my son brought a bunch of tree branches over. And so I just said, "I can get, I can get rid of it." And so I just go over there and dumped them. I did not see the sign when I, when I went over there. So it wasn't, it wasn't the way that I should have.
What did our guy's find when they went over the name?
I, I'd have to go back and official report. And I, I don't know that I would want to discuss the details of a, of a charge here necessarily.
Sure.
It was sufficient to, to warrant, uh, it'll probably...
I think without, what we can, it's not an actual...
It's not actual items, so...
And then...
You have something, anything else, Rosie?
Pardon?
Do you have anything else?
I, I just had one other thing. I'm, I'm trying to get a plat for a house that we put out there for about two years ago. And I know how the city feels that, uh, they, uh, they hesitate to let people build outside of the city limits in the jurisdiction. So I'm trying to get that plat. And we've been trying for two years now. But I think we're getting close to it.
Is that the one where the golf course?
Yeah. Yep. But anyhow, the, uh... It's, it's about, it's about, it's about finished. It was kind of a long project on the, the building. My son is doing it for his mother and my wife. The, they're the ones that own it. But anyhow, the, uh, uh... We have, we have to get it planted. And so, uh, the, the city wants me to cancel the, uh, building eligibility by doing away with the, uh... Putting it all back to ag. And that, that's what they want us to do is put it all back to ag so we can't do any more building out there. And so, uh, I did have a little conference with the city development group. And they were looking out there. And so I would like to leave it as rural residential in case someone like the city wants to build, wants to do something with it. Uh, I, I don't know if there's any harm in leaving it that way. But it would, uh, it would shut down me from putting more houses up or slow it down. They, they don't want me to put houses up. That's what I've been told, but that's okay. And I understand that. But I don't know if I want to move that all back to ag.
I've heard about that house a couple times, and I've wondered how, if the, the driveway is even legal that you have at that house? Uh, I talked to the council just now to speak to D C O S R. But no, this is coming before the planning commission adds up yet. Uh, and it really needs to go to the planning commission before, uh, it's up for council discussion, so...
All right, well, with that, Rosie, thank you for coming in tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else want to speak under visitors to be heard? Scene none. We will move on to the public hearings this evening. Uh, first item, uh, open the public hearing, uh, for the resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash twenty-two dash oh-one, Boynton Avenue Resolution of Necessity.
Mayor Council, this is a resolution of necessity. It's, uh, one of the more important steps in the process of financing the Boynton Avenue project. Um, that project uses approximately two hundred thousand dollars in special assessments for the project. Um, out of a project total of approximately three point million dollars. Um, you'll, you'll all be familiar with this. Uh, back in twenty twenty, the council passed a resolution that identified, uh, a financing framework for public improvements. Uh, and the, uh, the improvements that we're making in this case are contained in that memo as well as the planned funding sources and our actual funding sources uh, that are consistent with that. So in order to initiate that special assessment process, uh, we're required to hold a public hearing on a proposed resolution of necessity. And that's, uh, what we're here for tonight. That's been distributed as required. Uh, the resolution has been provided to each property owner. Uh, those are all included in your brackets for the year as well. The current maximum was actually established in a separate resolution, uh, in which case we put it at sixty-five dollars for this year. I do think, um, it, it's important to note that the sixty-five dollars was for twenty twenty-one. Uh, when we established that, the council, um, there's a, a sense of the council that that should be adjusted every year for inflation. Uh, so I, I can see that going, uh, up as much as ten percent for next year based on current inflation, but we don't know what we have where that's going to be. Uh, and then the other thing I would add in there, that the maximum rate does not include driveway approaches. And that's, uh, there are several approaches along this project.
So this just follows the standard that we as the, I don't know if everyone was on it, but that the council set out how we're in on projects, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So we can invite anybody here who'd like to come up and speak on, for the, about the resolution? Step up to the podium, say your name and your address?
For the Boynton project. I don't care if you're on this chat.
If you, we're, we're talking about the Boynton Avenue street resolution. So if you wanted to speak on that, either pro or...
I want, I have something to say, yes.
All right, so if you can start with your name and your address, and then you can go from there?
Carolyn Randall.
Okay.
One oh-four West Boynton, Lennox, South Dakota. I dumped this out so I could keep my plats to that end. Bill and I moved to Lennox in February of nineteen sixty-five. When we bought the house on Boynton Avenue, it had curb and gutter, sidewalks, and a black topless street out in front of our house, all proselytism. It was not a, on a code, it was a map. The banker and city officials said we were lucky. We would never be assessed for the street as it is already paid. Over the most, over almost forty, fifty-seven years we've lived here, we have read many times that you cannot be assessed more than once. Lennox has always complied by that law in the past. In nineteen ninety-five, the neighbors in the one hundred block east Boynton and one hundred and two hundred blocks of west Boynton requested to have curb and gutter. And the city determined that it would be necessary to lower the street, reversing the normal drainage. Normal drainage is south and east. Eventually, they all go south and east. So we agreed to pay for new curb and gutter on our house lots and also on the three bacon lots that we owned. We paid for three hundred and five feet of curb and gutter on those two blocks of west Boynton. We had bought the property, these properties, these empty lots, to clean them up, keep them low, keep the weeds down. And the one that's where Mark Juniper went through, we bought that just to keep the road open. Because already cherry, potlar, maine, and cedar were closed going north. We bought that property and kept it up and paid taxes on it. And when it came time to put curb and gutter on it, we did. Our intention was always to give the land for the road to the city. That was the sole purpose for us, to buy it. And we had to borrow money to do it. The city suggested at that time when we put the curb and gutter on that if Juniper, to curb, to use the curb and gutter as if Juniper was extended. So we did that, the way they asked us to. And they also asked us at that time if we would stub the water line out to the north so that if we developed, we wouldn't have to dig up Boynton. So we did that. I have a receipt for six hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents for that. Although we've never agreed to the reversing of the normal drainage, we didn't want to go against our neighbors, so we allowed it. A few years later, NSP expanded the transfer station, which is at Boynton and Elm Street. Or the transport. And they were required to put on curb and gutter at that time. And so since we own the other half of that block, we put on more curb and gutter, one hundred and fifty feet on Boynton and fifty feet on Cedar. In our sixty-five years of marriage, we've had some pretty rough times at times. And we've struggled. We've had medical expenses and times when during, between employment. We've been on our own since we got married. We could never ask for help from our families. They didn't have anything to give us. Bill is from a big family, and he's helped support his, his younger brothers and sisters even after we were married. We've worked hard and did without and made do and put away for our retirement. And we're both in our eighties now. And we won't be able to work any longer. So we're not going to be able to replace retirement funds. And we're hoping just that they'll last until we die. We don't want to be a burden to our children. All those years when we were struggling, they did without a lot of things, too. We've been paying taxes in Lennox for fifty-six years. And although I've been told that the taxes we paid for these fifty-six years were not for the streets, the budgets all have dollar amounts for the streets. So regardless, what the ci, uh, a city has an obligation to, by law, to maintain streets in your city. We should not be assessed again for our street. And really and truly, we really cannot afford to be assessed again. Every dollar that you take out of your retirement fund, you can't put it back. So we can, we've been hearing, oh, you've got the waste that we could pay, we can put it on the taxes. There's still money out of our pocket. And then it's also, you've got interest piled onto it. And that's something that we've tried to avoid throughout our life. We've only tried to borrow money on a property, something that would grow in value. In closing, let me add this, too. The property line for blocks one hundred east and one hundred west, Boynton, were surveyed in eighteen sixty-two. And the street was blacktopped in the nineteen fifties. If there was an error in the survey lines a hundred and fifty-nine years ago and the street established seventy years ago, I believe I own what I bought in nineteen sixty-five. It is entirely unnecessary for you to correct the error and destroy what we have established. Especially when you will make a house built fifty years ago with a, that had a building permit at that time and made that building permit. And if you perceive what the process that you've told us about, you will make this house unsellable. And it's completely unfair and morally, if not illegal, it's certainly morally illegal. And I don't know how you can sleep at night if you do it.
Can you clarify the end of that last statement? About the...
Basically, what I thought about that? Uh, property line? Or right or left?
I think what she was referring to is the house, there, there's a house on the block. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You do know what I...
There's a house down the block that has a shorter offset or setback. So a setback twenty feet from where we think the property line is. And there's a concern in there that when, you know, when that street's built, the sidewalks put in, that longer vehicle will park in that driveway or in that garage. And without overhanging that sidewalk, which is your, that is what it is.
So the setbacks on that property are different than anybody else's or their...
Well, the house, that house has been there for over a long...
Right, so it was...
And what the setbacks were back then or, you know, when they were... Um, I can't tell you, but it was before in past projects. And there's about, I think, probably six or seven of them, just on last information. They lived at the same length of offset and sidewalk structure there.
My abstract shows that the property was surveyed by a licensed surveyor.
Yep. And what, there, there's two parts, so there's...
A worker for the federal government who was selling this land
Yep.
at that time in nineteen sixty-two.
So the second part of the concern is that where the property line is, did... So the second part of the concern is that where the property line is, we've surveyed, we have surveyors on staff that are licensed. And where we've established the regular line, there seems to be a disagreement where that line is. Um, if you look at the plat from the section line, uh, there's thirty-three foot of regular line. So we've simply found the section line in the field and then offset that to that thirty-three foot. And that's where we feel that the city has jurisdiction to. And there's a disagreement on where that line is.
So like a two-foot disagreement or a three-foot?
Two, three, two, three.
That's, that's the east-west, more side of the, of the line.
Could I speak?
Sure.
That property line's one, Big Mike, line two. Right beside him, his name's Fred Steppen. And they've got one pile with Boynton and that one.
Fred, your, your property is included on my abstract.
Is it? But they're going to take three feet of my front yard. And there's no reason for it. The section line, they say, was, is off, or the section line's right, but the survey was wrong by three feet. And we've been there, I've been there forty-two years. And it hasn't affected me one bit. I have not seen any problems off middle of that street with the traffic. But this is not right. They come in and take three feet of my land. Wait. Are you going to pay for that? I get a reduction in my taxes? Probably not. We've had a meeting twice with the engineer and this gentleman right here. But they said, well, we're going to take your three feet of land. There's room to get that sidewalk through there without taking away that three feet of land. Go down there, look. You take that three feet of land, you're going to take a lot of trees out. I didn't have nothing written down, but I, this rand goes right from what she told you for. Uh, she's been there a lot longer than me, but I've been there forty-two years. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Charles Bloom on floor east Boynton. I believe Ms. Randall was talking about my house there for the short setback. And the setback was either nonexistent or much less fifty years ago. The house next to me at one hundred east Boynton retains the same setback. That one was built long before the rest, nineteen oh-one. What I would like to know is, when you take that three feet, what do you do for the compensation? Because there shouldn't be a compensation for lowering everybody's property value. You take three feet and put a bike path within, you know, fifteen, eighteen feet of my house and the house next to me and the Randalls and Henrys. You're going to lower the property value. Is there a compensation baggage included in that for lowering that property value? As, that's more of a state law? If you lower property values, you have to compensate for it? I'm going to take that as a, we don't know that yet.
Counsel, I would say that that question isn't pertinent to the public hearing at issue tonight with regard to the special assessment.
Good. So, as I will be in violation of the setbacks from now on, what happens from there? I mean, I'm in violation of the setback, is that a law, is that just?
Ordinance. Again, if, the issue wasn't pertinent to the public hearing, had discussion tonight. Uh, but the, there is, the setbacks are what the setbacks were. There's nothing we can do about that.
Well, obviously there is. If the setbacks were something different and now there's something different again, I mean, things can be changed, is that not correct?
Again, the issue's not pertinent to the public hearing at issue tonight.
Perfect. And our ordinances don't seem to be quite as strict as a government would think. Because, no offense to, well, that Cameron's here, which I thought he was. His new townhomes have no sidewalks at all, correct? Wasn't that part of our city ordinance? When we build here, you put a curb, gutter, sidewalk.
I'm not sure what those were called.
I think that was before Nate was here and I think that his project was coming.
Nate's project was coming, that was the reason why he wasn't.
They will have sidewalk.
They will have sidewalk.
So we just didn't enforce that one? It wasn't. For a reason. I make him do it twice. So because we're doing it twice.
But I need the assessment.
You see where that, we're doing it twice, but we don't make someone else do it twice.
When you say you're doing it twice, do you, do you have sidewalk in front of your?
We have curb and gutter on.
Do you have sidewalk?
Sidewalk I would be willing to pay for, no questions.
So you put it in last year and then have it torn out this year for prime?
No, I have no problems being assessed for the sidewalk.
But that's why, I'm going back to Cameron's, that's why that was.
No, no question on that part. Everybody has to pay their fair share, they shouldn't have to pay it twice. I mean, as was previously stated here. But we'd also like to know where the property line is officially standing. I mean, you're basing it off a pin that was found by Mitch on my property that he told me about at a meeting at my house. And said, well, that pin is just irrelevant. Doesn't matter, we're going to set him here. I'm going to lose three trees out front, three feet. And our property value will drop. With no questions, no arguments, that's it.
And I, I think the property, that right-of-way line issue uh, is something that needs to be discussed separate of this public hearing. This public hearing is on the special assessment alone.
Good.
So with that, anything of?
Nope.
Special assessment, okay, thank you. Any other visitors for the Boynton Avenue resolution in this city?
Preston Madsen, two twelve east Rommel. Um, my questions are, when we had our first meeting that I was informed of, I bought my place in July. First thing I heard about any of this was from the neighbor. And when we went to our first meeting in, I think it was supposed to be September and we got moved to October? Something like that. We were told that sixty-five dollars is giving you the maximum price cost per linear foot. Oh. Now we're getting something that says, you know, twenty dollars curb gutter, twenty-four dollar sidewalk. Where is the sixty-five dollars at?
So that sixty-five dollars is something that's spelled out in a separate resolution that would be in? Resolution twenty twenty-one zero five one dash. So it's resolution twenty twenty-one five ten zero one in form of separation. That's what we spell out, uh, city's policy to cap it at sixty-five meters.
Sixty-five dollars.
Sixty-five, sixty-five dollars.
So, so I understand that if those are done individually, that would be the cost per linear foot. But when we're doing the entire street reconstruction project, it's capped at sixty-five dollars. Instead of individually assessed.
And again, that, that amount can change if the council decides for next year uh, based on inflation as you mentioned in previous meetings.
But sixty-five is the number for a cap?
Right now, yes.
For a cap for all or just the road? That's what I'm.
For everything, for everything.
Okay.
So what, what the, so what it says, the special assessment rating for any street curb gutter and sidewalk improvement shall be the actual cost of the improvement, but if not to exceed sixty, sixty-five dollars per linear foot as indicated by the city's general assessment policy.
Okay, so that's just the itemized?
Yes, yeah, so if, if we're, yeah, it hits all the possibilities.
With the exception of the driveways.
Right. Okay. And then my other question is, on the driveway, so my property touches Boynton on the north side and Rommel on the south side. Can I get a driveway in there? Because to access the rear part of my property, I need to be able to get in from Boynton. Would that be a here thing or?
I think we should talk about that.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
I don't think it's impossible, but there's a couple of ordinances that we'll have to look at first.
Okay. So, look at that slide.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Any further discussion amongst council for the resolution?
Curious about, uh, a point that was made with acquisition of land and what that, uh, how that looks for compensating the landowner.
The city's not looking to acquire, uh, with respect to the, the property line. Uh, the city's not looking to acquire any property there. Uh, there's simply a disagreement over where the property line lies. Um, I feel confident, uh, as the, the city engineer, that that, that the stakes that were placed out there by the city's surveyor are accurate simply because they're based off of the, the section line. In some cases, that means that previous surveys, uh, in our opinion are inaccurate. Uh, so it's not that anybody would necessarily be losing any property. It's simply a, um, confirming where that line actually is.
And is that pretty uniform across the entirety of Boynton?
No. If you go further to the east, um, there appear to be no corrections necessary.
So the Boynton Avenue project will not infringe on property owners further to the east on what they believe is their property?
No. Is there a jog or there's a jog now the other way?
If you were to stand, um, at the corner of seventeen and Boynton, um, on our side by Sunshine and look west down where those stakes are, you'll see fairly clearly where that red line lies. Uh, once you get to, I think it's the balloon house. Once you get to that point, they're just looking where those, where that line is. Um, because of previous surveys.
Yeah, one oh-four east, one hundred Boynton are really close to Boynton as, as it sits today.
And Mitch, you're confident in your survey?
Yeah, we have a licensed professionals that, that, I mean, the, the section line, there's a corner, there's a corner on the west end, this west of Juniper, there's a section line, a section corner in the middle of the road. There's a section corner in the highway intersection of Boynton Avenue. You simply survey those two pins and it's a straight line between the two. You offset that to thirty-three feet, that reads on the plat and that's, and on the east half of the project, it lines up right with a lot of established pins on there. When you get to Main Street in the west, they don't line up as one pack. Some of the properties on Mr. Bloom's property, there's two pins that are supposed to represent that north line, but one's further north than the other. So there's already the discrepancy just in pins out there. You see the same thing at the Juniper intersection for that east-west property line. There's two pins, one that's further north than the other.
Wouldn't that coincide with the years of the development of those properties and the ones that are east or newer, so they're up to whatever year? And then the ones that are, that are, the setbacks are, need to be adjusted or have been there for a long time?
It's, it's hard to say.
Really difficult.
Really difficult to say how those pins got established the way they are established. So that's why we go back to the section line and set that offset out there. And again, we do hit some of the, it does match up with some of the pins we're seeing on the field. There's a few pins that don't match up with that line. So that's where the discrepancy lies. And again, it's not considered pertinent to the, to this agenda item of the night, but it's something that we're going to continue to investigate and just make sure that we're in the right, I guess, which we're.
So this assessment, if we're to pass tonight, doesn't have anything to do with adjusting setbacks at this point? Because I would like to go out there myself and.
Is there a way to get like that independent surveyor to look at it? What's, what are you talking about for cost to do that?
I don't know.
Question?
Yes, that house just west of me was put in a year and a half ago and re-surveyed. And his pin has been aligned fine. And he, they're going to take three feet off his property too. He just moved in there, that house was just built, say, a year and a half ago.
Mrs. Steppen, is that?
That survey was done then.
Is that the property just on the west side of Juniper?
East side.
East side, east side.
Thank you.
That's definitely something we need to explore, but again, for tonight's discussions.
Right, right.
I'm at one twelve west Boynton, he's right on the west side of me.
I got you right here, thank you.
But his pins would be in line with where mine would be. And around two, three hundred bucks for that survey. Oh, there's the open. Yeah, he just had it done. We looked at the pins the other day. And they're there. But yet, you're going to take three feet off his, part of his property on his driveway. Just because of that section line, which is invisible.
Mitch, why does this survey down, I need to be finalized?
To destroy people's property.
I mean, before we, before we bid the project, I want to make sure we have this understood.
So early spring.
Yeah, so I, I mean, may I engage?
Yeah, sure.
Sort it out a little bit for us.
What did it say, right?
Yeah.
January.
January. I mean, we're, we're proceeding with our plans, knowing that we got to, you know, research this some more. Um, again, we're confident in where we feel the property line is. It's nothing I, I have never come across this before.
This is surprising, unfortunately.
Yeah, you get into old parts of Collins and the pins do, there is a, there is a lot of variation in there. So, but again, I, we haven't had this situation where our improvements need to cross some of those non-events that have been recognized in the past, I'd say that, so.
Did the, do the current plans accommodate for that three feet?
Yes.
So it's planned with that three feet taken?
Yes. Our plans are based off our survey and are based off of the section line. And the understanding that the city maintains thirty-three feet of right line through there. Good discussion points brought forward tonight.
All right, so.
I have one question, the first gal who's still talking about getting assessed twice. Can, does anybody have any insight there or what, is that an accurate statement?
About state law?
Yeah.
There's no state law that prohibits a, a second special assessment. We have a policy, uh, in that framework, I think it's fifteen years. Uh, that if a, if a property's been assessed for the last fifteen years, it can't be assessed again. But outside of that, I'm not aware of any, any state law or, or otherwise. So looking for some action. So move, thank you.
I have a motion of second to approve the monumentary resolution of necessity. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash twenty-two dash oh one has been passed. Uh, so we'll move on to resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven twenty-two. That is the same resolution or should that be oh two?
Yeah, it's only, it's only two, not actual, it's been updated.
Sorry. Oh two, Ash Street Resolution of Necessity.
Mayor Council saying, uh, saying issue here, though a little bit different on South Ash Street, there's a gravel street. Uh, we're looking to make the same improvements that were recommended earlier this year, simply opening this for public hearing again. Uh, there was a discussion, um, well, we'll have this discussion later on tonight about whether we use asphalt or concrete for South Main, that's separate from this issue, but it'd be together.
Invite any public here to speak on the Ash Street Resolution of Necessity?
You're also here for a report, you spent that. We lived on that street the longest, we paid the longest taxes there. Uh, we have the biggest loss, we lose three trees in the process. And again, I'd like to just say, why are you putting sidewalks on a dead-end street? There's a lot of dead-end streets in town that do not have sidewalks. They, uh, some of the reasons the council have given before in past meetings is we gotta start somewhere. And safety issues, kids riding bikes, you know, and they need sidewalks to ride on, I guess. And sidewalks are made for pedestrians. And that's coming from somebody that makes their living on a sidewalk. Uh, I'd much rather, if I'm paying for a sidewalk, I'd rather put them on the foot street where people are using it instead of a dead-end street where only the residents would use it. Or the other option is put a sidewalk on one side, all utilities are buried in my side, I'd lose three trees. You'd lose one tree on the other side. And we still have your safety that you want. And I could put a sidewalk on the foot street so people could get to the bike trail. But if you do it, if you start it on ours, you gotta do it on all dead-end streets. Cause like you said, it's a safety issue, that's what you're staying by, but you start on, you gotta start everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
So those, is there mold, bar and sidewalk connecting standard street?
Yeah, and this is the gravel.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
The reason it's being assessed is because we're improving the entire street.
Correct.
Yeah.
That the, when we have a sidewalk, including all this ground or not is. Including it or not including it wouldn't change the assessment.
So basically, you're gonna present.
And it's our, it's our standard, so we can start the street with what is.
Right.
Motion to approve.
I was like, was there anybody else that wanted to speak on Ash Street? It's the homeowner aware of that? I just feel like there's some confusion.
I.
On the cost.
On the cost.
Oh, I, I, I felt like we've been over here so mad, I've seen several times, back in May, I've met a person with a rough injury several times. So I, I think they're pretty aware of what they're.
Are you familiar with, I think Hartford and T both when they did their big sidewalk projects? I guess when they had some of the same concerns and there's sidewalks that will be like a normal sidewalk and they'll go around the trees.
Yeah.
And then continue on, I mean, is that a possibility?
You could, we could, I mean, we will put, we'll weave around some of those things, even if it's a private utility, that might be annoying at times. Um, so we try to work around those as much as we can and I feel like in some instances, there's, I think that right was actually near more than standard on the street. If I remember right, so there's a little bit less of a large and than normal. Doesn't it cause problems too when you go around the trees with the.
Yeah.
Growing up.
When you go around the trees, especially if it's a shallow root, you know, maples or something like that, you get, they just keep that sidewalk over time too. So we try to consider that, but we also try to work with the property owners too if there's a.
That's what I'm getting at, I mean, I'm sure you, I mean, that's been a couple of years ago.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, people that are working in Hartford and T would see if it worked or if a bunch of them are blocking by now.
Right. Yeah.
One of the areas that pay or replace it, you know, in a couple of years.
Right, so that's something that they're really having to about keeping the tree, we try to show them more control sometimes, so maybe try to work around their tree. A lot of times when you, when you really look at it that way, you're responsible for making them, after the sidewalks in place and, and it's fifty-fifty, you know, first one side, take the tree out.
I need a tree concussion on, in the right away? All right, okay.
I guess I would, I'd rather work with them if we can, you know, and hopefully explain all that to them.
If I, if I remember this particular tree is right and it won't develop from the go around, I'll kind of decide to stay with it.
South of what, next to the driveway?
I think it's further south, if I remember.
Well, it's really, we actually got a couple of.
All right, didn't see any other takers to speak on Ash Street, so we had a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion from council?
Uh, just from your memo, this will stay at sixty-five dollars. Yes, we'll keep that at sixty-five because it, it was delayed, no, no fault of the people, the residents.
Right.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, resolution twenty twenty-one eleven twenty-two oh two, Ash Street Resolution of Necessity passed. So I will oppose the public hearing at seven fifty-one. Onto the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion of second, any discussion on there?
Yeah, just a brief note, if you haven't paid a ton of attention to the details of police report, please do so. Couple is a very unusual month and hopefully not a standard month going forward in terms of citations and arrests. We're in a number of, I don't know if I'd call it unusual, new to us, citations and several more arrests than we are accustomed to. Our normal arrests, DUIs, controlled substance, those are above normal levels, but we dealt with some other areas. Just something to keep an eye on at this point, something to draw your attention to in terms of some of the things that we're looking at.
Will, can you share if these are residents or individuals visiting town from outside communities?
I don't think it would be appropriate for me to share that information this way.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, congrats to Jesse for completing the wastewater treatment, I think it was level one.
Yeah.
It's pretty exciting, I was pretty thrilled to see that. And of course, driving by west over, you can see sand now, so excited about it. Yeah, there's a lot of sand. Chance that we could play some volleyball in the spring.
All right, any other items? Roll call, Riley.
Aye.
Welch.
Aye.
Bowers.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Doherty.
Aye.
Swier.
Aye.
Consent agenda has been approved. Onto old business, ordinance six thirty cannabis establishment licenses.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Council, this is a second reading of ordinance six thirty that establishes the city's process for awarding licenses for three cannabis dispensaries. Uh, the other establishments, you'll recall it, if not limited, uh, to any number, we did update language in sections four point oh four oh three and four point oh four oh seven with regard to the inspection of those facilities, just to make sure it's more consistent with, um, some of the other laws, state laws that we're looking at along terms of, um, alcoholic beverage licenses, adult or immigrant business licenses, just they, made that language more consistent with both of the parts. Recommend a sec, uh, motion to approve second.
Any other question?
Second.
All right, motion of second, discussion.
Um, I mean, I didn't see a license fee in this document.
Uh, I think we've been looking at five thousand, if I remember.
We originally talked about fifteen hundred and I was concerned that wasn't quite enough. Sioux Falls is twenty-five thousand.
Mm-hmm. So you want it to be twenty-five thousand or?
I didn't say that.
So we don't, one of the things we've gotten away from in our ordinance is establishing fees in the ordinance.
Okay.
Because our, our fees are established by resolution every year. Um, I think Harrisburg is ten thousand and then five thousand refundable if you don't get your license. Um, I think T was the same, not positive, but I think they made it in the same area.
So my concern is, um, if you didn't see Sioux Falls have upwards of almost eighty applicants. Um, and they had a lottery and selected five, correct? And so, um, I don't know if they'll come out as part of Lennox, but I think that we're potentially going to get some applicants. Um, so, you know, is there an opportunity there that we want to have, make sure that we have applicants that are someone that is able to, you know, is more vested in it than just a couple thousand dollars.
I think that's appropriate. And when we, we'll be looking at, the resolution for twenty twenty-two fees will come up next meeting, the December, the first December meeting. Uh, and we'll have that established on there. I, I think it's fair welcome for discussion, or the council thinks that, though it should be set. I don't, I, I think it should be more than five thousand, uh, but I, I don't know what the appropriate level is and at what point are we, um, what, at what point is acceptable? And does the council wish to attract those businesses or make a barrier to entry? I, I don't know. I, I know part of the Sioux Falls process was you had to be open with any year too. That was part of.
You had to utilize your license, you had to be open and running with that.
Any further discussion? All right, we had a motion of second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, ordinance six thirty, first reading passes. Onto item B, authorized advertisement for South Main. So it's first reading here. That's the second reading there, okay. Second reading, sorry. Uh, item B, authorized advertisement for South Main Street, South Ash Street asphalt project.
Uh, Nick, did you share the correspondence?
Yes, so Mayor Council earlier this week, or label after, if you say, or you, uh, correspondent regarding the potential cause of change. If we were to use concrete instead of asphalt, that was estimated at approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, was there any other detail?
In addition to, I mean, right now, we have designed an asphalt road, um, it's, we're needing the curb and gutter in place. We're tearing the asphalt out, prepping the subgrade, doing symmetry to base underneath that and then stabilizing that grade and putting the asphalt back. Um, with looking at doing a concrete section, we need to kind of pull out everything, so creating gutters and some of the approaches that are adjacent to it. Um, so that, that kind of compounds the, the cost a little bit there. Overestimating an additional four hundred thousand would allow us to go to a concrete section too there.
This doesn't appear to be a very prime opportunity to go concrete.
Well, what's, what's the lifespan difference?
Well, in concrete, concrete will last longer, it's less maintenance.
How much longer, how much less?
I mean, there's pavement, it'll last fifty years without having to get, or, no, there's still joint repairs that you might have to do on that, that, that concrete. Um, but asphalt road, we have to, you know, seal it every seven years. Uh, you have to, you know, over there probably after twenty-one years. If I stand that pavement, you know, thirty years, I think if you get thirty years of asphalt pavement, I think that's good. Um, I could help answer that.
So in your, in your opinion, which way do you think we should go?
Oh, I mean, I've always do, concrete's to me is more durable and I think it has a better lifecycle cost, but it has more upfront costs. So it really comes down to the budget a lot of times, whether, whether it can be budgeted for. Um, on an industrial park area, I like the, the thought, I agree, there's going to be heavier trucks out there. We've already experienced running down this road, so, um, I feel we can get the, before we have design, we can get the base stable, stabilized and now put it in a thicker section that is there now. But I know that a concrete section will be more durable.
In terms of the budget, the only barrier would be, of course, how we pay for that kind of cost increase. Um, we will already, with the plan for, um, Boynton Avenue, um, the swimming pool parking lot, couple other smaller projects is to use sales tax loan again next year. Um, so what we would more likely do is we would roll this cost increase into that sales tax loan and pay for it that way. So if impossible, no, but it does, it would be incurred then, so we would reuse our.
Do we end up paying the difference in maintenance over time with asphalt?
In an engineer's opinion, yes, I believe it would pay for itself in the long term.
In an engineer's opinion?
I, yeah, there's, there's been some recent bidding where they've done alternates, compared to cost. And some of those recent lifecycle costs, it shows that concrete's, you know, is a better lifecycle pavement, I guess. My key, my key argument for going to concrete is that this is an industrial street and we're only going to have more and more traffic on that street, heavy traffic. Um, whether it's a bus or traffic trailers or whatever it might be.
Well, just the bus traffic on that road.
Yeah. It's my.
Significant.
Cause how old is this road?
Fourteen years.
But we put heavy machinery in from down the, yeah, central base and that really worked it even more, so. I think because it's, it's a major affair for folks coming in from out of town to the high school all the time, for buses every day in and out, it's a prime candidate for concrete.
Well, that's right by the industrial park, I mean, it makes sense.
Right.
As long as we get our base course issue figured out, although it's, we have a very expensive concrete road, that's our, our base course design, take it care of, it's my concern.
With, it being forty percent, well, sixty-six percent, depends on how you look at it. Uh, it is, uh, I, I would imagine the percentage is much different on other, uh, other workups because we're going, right? We already have a base established there with curb and gutter.
So to address the stability of the subgrade, we're still going to do symmetry to base and that's, in this day and age, that's not the best, um, thing you can do to a subgrade to make it stable. We're still going to propose that, the concrete section will likely be an eight inch, eight inch concrete section versus a six inch asphalt section we're considering now. So there's no doubt in my mind that the concrete section will give us that much more strength than concrete and some, a lot more.
What are we gonna use as a threshold one for, for new projects for deciding which way?
If, if. If we decide we want to start moving down this road, I would suggest an update to the design standards. And probably look at, um, your arterials, any industrial street.
Trucking others.
Yeah. Now, I'll look at making those your, your concrete streets. Um, anything outside of that largely residential streets, collectors, I, I, I think it was with asphalt just far.
And there's new, there's new data out there too, if you're going to Iowa, there's new, there'll be a lot of concrete shoots whether you're in the residential streets. Um, in this area, Sioux Falls is kind of where everybody looks to the, to see experiences that they've had. Um, they have actually an area, it's by, by one of the golf courses, I can't remember what, what the condition of this, but they've had, that's where those fifty-year pavements are in the residential area. To me, still, they've held up a long time. Um, what's, what's kind of changed recently is you're, you're seeing, um. Um, what's, what's kind of changed recently is you're seeing, um, comfort level with thinner sections. So in those residential areas, it used to be that the city, Sioux Falls, their minimum standard is nine inches of pavement. You get them in the DOT and that, and they have thick sections through there, so everybody's a little nervous to go thinner than that because nobody does. Well, to propose an eight inch or nine inch section for a residential street, then you just blow that cost out of the water. So you're seeing studies and, and projects where they've done six-inch pavement, concrete pavements and, and level. Now that's making the work cost effective against asphalt. Um, I think if, if we really wanted to look at what we wanted our standard to be, I think we would help you with looking at, you know, some of the pro- recent projects have been done. Those lifecycle costs a little bit closer, um, than we're really talking about, you know, streets less than arterial roads. I think arterial road second, sections, I think is, is not uncommon to do those, just as a standard.
What's the longevity of the infrastructure under those streets?
Well, we're putting PVC sewer water in there so it won't, it's a hundred years and that's the kind of what everybody. The fittings and the fitting, they're the things that maybe wear out, uh, what PVC does. You can see some burp holes on some of the fittings depending on the soil that are now damaged by the first thing that starts corroding. Um, so you might have to dig up, have the fitting blow apart because the bolts have riled out on you. Um, but that can vary quite a bit. We've seen some fittings riled out within fifteen years. We've seen some that last thirty years. Um, here we are using, as we've seen in the steel bolts, so that's not, that's bolted in the ground. So we're doing everything to kind of try to keep that to.
Just with reference, Highway seventeen has just redone five years ago, three years ago, that's asphalt.
Right.
So. And it's not that we can't do asphalt down, cut the dirt and roads.
Yeah. And they're repairing it now.
Sure.
I don't know what was the point you were making.
Yeah, but you have to know are those, I don't, is that an eight inch section?
I don't know.
I want to say that.
I think it is though.
Yeah, I think that's kind of, that's been, the DOT is eight inch asphalt section versus six inch.
But that goes close, I mean, it goes back into the, what's the next second cost? You want to repair your cost and you, you want to bear that upfront cost, hoping that you're not going to have those repairs there.
Well, there's going to be cheaper to do it now than it is in thirty years.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, thanks for doing the research on the cost side of it, so we can make, make good decisions to on and off.
Is there a way to bid it in a way like give it as an option? We've seen that done because in my opinion, it's kind of confusing for the contractors, so I'd be a little reluctant to do that. I would rather us help you guys, because we see these bids all the time. I'd rather, you know. Rather you just be comfortable with our estimate and make a decision based off our estimates that we don't have a big, ultimately get out there for the contractors. And especially with the January, she never run with this project.
January is coming. Cool. My, my recommendation would be to go with concrete, uh, it's not a council project at this point.
I think, you know, the, the agenda is the advertisements, but really you get, if you decide you want to go, you have to direct us to.
I'd agree.
Go to concrete if that's the case. We need, we need to, my plan was to come back with a proposal for the next meeting to, I mean, just amend our fees to get that in scope. No motion yet.
What's on the motion now? Motion to advertise for bid.
Second. Motion second. Who's second? Rachel. Uh, to advertise for bid. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to check where I'm fired up?
Okay, motion to advertise for bid as concrete.
Second.
Aye.
Motion to advertise for bid as comfy and a second is on table, so we will do all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, make some plan changes. Alright, now we are on to new business. LADC SMG eight partnership update.
What's the easiest way to get somebody on the screen? If I forward a new email to the, I think. Easier than trying to hook this up.
Yep.
We came with visual.
This thing's had me out here for the last few weeks. It might be your lucky day. It is your lucky day.
Look at that.
Okay, just tell them when you want me to do a page and we'll, we'll.
Alright, good evening, council. Thanks so much for allowing me the opportunity to present to you all tonight. Uh, President and CEO Jesse Fonker, uh, sends his regrets that he couldn't make it tonight, um, so I'm going to be presenting instead. Uh, about twice a year, um, Jesse and I myself would like to try to get out to each of the city councils and our member communities, get an update of what we've been working on. And receive some feedback on how we can best serve all of you as member communities and on top of that, since I've been working directly with your community for about a little over six months now. Um, I think it'd be good if I were here in front of the council as a whole to, to answer any questions that you guys have on, on what we've been working on. Um, so first providing overview of our organization. So Sumetra Growth Alliance, uh, our mission is to stimulate, sustain and support the economic growth of the communities, businesses and general stakeholders of the metro area outside of Sioux Falls. Uh, right now that is in Minnehaha, Lincoln County is our vision by working with our partners, we will help create a strong, united and prosperous metro. Through our pillars of growth, engagement, organization will become a national model for successful regional economic development. Come on and go to the next slide. Um, so just an overview for those of you who aren't totally familiar with our history. Uh, Sumetra Growth Alliance is kind of the result of the merger between the Lincoln and Minnehaha County Economic Development Associations, both of which were created in the nineties. And existed as separate entities with one shared staff person up until earlier this year where they were merged and created the Sumetra Growth Alliance. Um, we're supported by a variety of private investors, including utility companies, financial institutions, developers. We jointly serve thirteen public members, including, uh, City Lennox. Uh, but we're happy to announce that we're expanding outside of our traditional geographic footprint of Lincoln County, Minnehaha County, um, with Salem. And McCook County joining in January of twenty twenty-two, they're not only going to become a member community, they're also signing up for the Economic Development Management Service, much like Lennox. So we will be hiring a second economic development staff person here, specialist staff person here shortly, um, to service Salem as well as Delaware Rapids. Um, so as Sumetra Growth Alliance, we like to try to focus on, on two major pillars of, of economic development and that's growth and engagement. Um, so the growth is kind of what we think of as traditional economic development, uh, business development, business retention, expansion, residential development. We measure our success in this area by increase in tax base, sales tax dollars, jobs, businesses and housing units. And there's also engagement which, uh, in this kind of current economic climate, in this social climate, has become increasingly more important to, to the success of the first pillar and that's, that's engagement. So this is including marketing, uh, staff support, economic development, education, community development, public policy. Uh, we like to evaluate our success through digital engagements, improve understanding of economic development of folks like you. Um, stronger communities, uh, stronger kind of civic pride and then economic development friendly policy in all of our member communities. Um, so a breakdown of how our membership works, uh, previously, you can click to the next slide. Previously, Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties were on two separate, um, sort of membership fees, membership basis, bases, uh, if you will. I believe Lincoln County was sort of a, a flat fee whereas Minnehaha County was based on population. Um, we unified that now to make all, all member communities will be paying their membership based on population. Um, and the amount you pay for residents depends on your size. Uh, it's an annual membership investment and your initial investment includes a representative position on the Membership Advisory Board. Right now, Shree Zena, who's President of LADC, is Lennox's representative on that board. Um, what we, what we really like to stress is that, that for our organization to be successful, for our member community to escape the most of their investments, that really requires buy-in from local institutions. That are interested in economic development and this includes, uh, local development organizations, councils and also private developers as well. So we moved to a dual board structure previously when it was Lakita and Makita, and each of them had their own separate county boards. They would meet in a joint session maybe once or twice a year. Um, we've scrapped that and now we're running two boards. First is our executive board, uh, which meets monthly. This is kind of concerned with the nitty gritty details of our organization, uh, focuses a lot on, on personnel and on policy. And then we've also created to make sure that our member communities are still feeling heard, that they still have a, an active role in our organization is the Membership Advisory Board. Uh, made up of representatives of each community, our municipality, county and utility company with standing. Uh, representatives from each community will be appointed via resolution in January of each year. Um, I believe you guys are, or since, I believe you already have a resolution for them to, to appoint a member to the MIB.
Correct.
Um, but SMGA will provide it to communities that do not have one. Um, we provide, we do a monthly meeting, um, and then the goal for the Membership Advisory Board going forward is really to set programming and advise staff on the direction of the organization. Um, we serve a, a kind of, we're a membership-based organization, we exist to serve the interests of our members. Um, and we can't necessarily execute that job unless the members are giving us constant feedback on what they want us to be working towards. Um, the plan, uh, so previously, the last several years, all our, uh, Membership Advisory Board meetings, and this was also with, when Makita and Makita would meet separately within all of Sioux Falls. Uh, next year, we're moving into a new office space which will force us to downsize our order space. We're going to be moving all the Membership Advisory Boards back out into our member communities like it was when the organization's first started. Um, we think this is a positive development. We'll get folks from around the region out to some of these different communities to see these positive developments, make better connections with each other. I think Lennox will be here in March. I already signed, signed you guys up, um, so, so feel free to come and see what the MIB is working on. Uh, the board will also appoint members to our executive board and the chairman of, of the Membership Advisory Board sits on the, uh, executive board. Come on and go to the next slide. Uh, oh, there we go. I think we're, we're going backwards. There we go. Um, so, so kind of what we do, uh, so as Sumetra Growth Alliance, we look, we like to work with the local economic development organizations. Communicating with the guardian boards of, of the municipality, board directors of the economic development organization, coordinating with local leadership to create and execute local business retention expansion programs. Educate and empower staff like the officials and volunteers in economic development area and assist in putting together projects. Um, so, so as we've become, so in the past, the, when it was Lakita Makita, the organization was much more reactive than proactive. Uh, we weren't out there prospecting, looking for new businesses to bring to the member communities. We were out there trying to initiate projects. It was largely that the communities themselves would initiate these projects or go after these prospects and the staff person would be brought in as, as sort of like extra muscle or extra expertise. Um, under kind of current staff for administration, uh, the emphasis has been much more on proactive, um, being aggressive and responding to RFIs from both private entities as well as the state. And also trying to get into these member communities to initiate some of these projects. Um, with this kind of increased aggressiveness have come some concerns about conflict of interest and ethics. And this has especially become more of a question that we've received as more member communities have signed up for the Economic Development Management Service. Um, we want to be fair to all of our members. We don't want it to be seen as though we're shoveling projects towards members that are paying for an extra service. Um, so we've been working on creating a conflict of interest policy and code of ethics to ensure that all communities are treated fairly. Um, when it comes to, to responding to, to RFIs and prospects as well as working on projects. Um, examples that we've had is that, say, community A receives, say that Lennox receives a prospect directly. It works with, with local staff, works with myself, works with Jesse, um, to work on breaking this business community. If that prospect was initiated in a certain community, we will only work on making that prospect come to this community before. Uh, and only if it's, it's clear that the project won't be landed in that community will we try to, to move it elsewhere in the region. Um, just in fairness to the, the community that generated the lead. And also when we receive RFIs from the state, um, we, we, if the prospect is a fit for multiple sites, we try to give kind of equal input from all of our member communities that would qualify for that particular lead. So looking at deliverables, I think this is a, this is important for our organization going forward. Um, we often receive from a lot of our member communities, I mean, you aren't exactly the organization of what can you do for us? Um, and that's a pretty good question because when it was one staff person or a reactive organization, um, you know, the work was only what we were requested to do. As the Economic Development Management Services become more crystallized, um, we're starting to kind of gather around the core of what we believe that we can deliver to every member community. Um, just as sort of a standard for their membership in the organization. So if they, if you want to go to the next slide. So some of these deliverables, uh, includes database management. Um, we have a, on our, on our current website, we have what's called Location One Information System, which is an inventory of all of the industrial locations in our member communities. That site selectors can easily kind of comb through to find what might best fit their needs. Also assembling contact information. I've been working on this here in Lennox and creating an master inventory of all the persons here in town. It's my existential crisis because I don't know how useful it's going to be, but I want it done because I think, I think it can be really, really helpful to the LADC and to the city in the, in the future. And deciding on prospects and, or deciding on projects, responding to prospects and just doing things a little bit more efficiently. Uh, landlord coordination, establishing relationships with area landlords, understanding opportunities. I've been doing this quite a bit. Uh, I'm actually meeting with some of the, the landowners, um, who have seen interest in their properties for future development or are part of those future growth areas, establishing those relationships. Making sure they understand what growth might be coming to those, to their property in the future. Uh, and communication is one that we've been really working on with our new website. Uh, we have the ability to send out branded content. Um, we started doing this for, for Baltic. We're hoping to kind of work with another member communities as well. Um, we're working on creating and managing social media feeds for, for economic development organizations across the region. Businesses attraction, uh, we can respond to requests for information, uh, from private brokers, uh, governors of economic development. Can also work with member communities to establish target industries, start making connections with possible projects. Retention and expansion, a meeting often with local business owners to make sure companies' needs are met, seeing what blind spots may be out in communities. Um, why wouldn't they be chosen for future expansion? Industrial park development is something that, that we've been becoming more interested in. Um, with the, with foundation park, the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, focusing Sioux Falls, they're really only going to be focusing on projects or, or leads. For, for new industries that are going to be purchasing forty acres or more. Um, so anything smaller than that is a really good opportunity for our member communities to try to, to bring in some of those companies that still provide a lot of jobs, still provide a lot of growth. Um, but just aren't going to fit for, for where the Sioux Falls community is headed. Um, uh, so we're working, coordinating with either the city, the D O, create public credit partnership. And then education, directing councils and staffs on economic development policy. Long term, um, we hope to continue to grow all these deliverables and grow the economic development management services to as many communities as are interested. As well as in the Cook and Turner counties, Salem being a risk for Cook County to join, uh, the organization. Even having, uh, conversations with other member organizations as well about joining in twenty twenty-two. Um, with more communities purchasing or buying into the EDMS program, um, we've had discussions of, of whether we kind of continue to hire. All-rounders like myself who do the marketing side and the business development side and everything, or if we begin to diversify and have specialties in, in different subfields. So, so potentially bringing on a marketing specialist if that's what your community, your development organization wants to work on, or somebody who's more experienced in, in industrial park development or in downtown redevelopment. Um, and as always, our objective is to widen the property tax base, grow sales tax revenue, increase population. Want to go to the next slide? Um, long term, what we'd like to have our organization work on is, is launch a cooperative investment model like the Corson Development Park Partnership that was started in, believe it was the nineties, early two thousands. Which was a joint project between several, uh, banks and development organizations across the region. Um, creating a leadership development initiative focusing on local equity leaders, economic development volunteers and staff. Uh, what we noticed in a lot of the smaller communities, there isn't really a next generation of leaders that, that's well versed in some of this stuff. So it almost means that we have to work with a blank slate every time there's maybe a, a changing of the guard. Um, crafting legislative policy through coordination with municipal members, we try to have more outreach with, with some of the local state senators and, and representatives. Um, and then seeing if there's kind of some consensus on what policies maybe the region as a whole would like to push. Formalize the Sumetra Mayor's Roundtable. Uh, I know the mayor, Mayor Duchesne has attended that several times. Um, having that kind of at a fixed date and time, adding marketing specialists to execute our communication strategy. Uh, and expand economic development, service, economic development management service probably. Uh, but ultimately we work for you and we, we want you to tell us what, what you need from us as an organization. And then finally, just a, a brief overview of kind of what we're seeing, some of the trends that are affecting our work. Uh, as you guys are probably well aware, we're, we're in an inflationary period, whether it's transitory or permanent. Um, if you know that question, you've probably worked for Jerome Powell. Um, but you're seeing wages, land prices and cost inputs in the region growing up. But this is meant to, when I first joined the organization about seven months ago. But this is meant to, when I first joined the organization about seven months ago, it seemed like we were getting a request for information from either the state or private broker almost every other day. That has significantly slowed down. We believe that it's, it's largely due to these rising wages, land prices, and cost inputs, particularly on the construction side. People wanted to wait and see if those will cool down before they commit to any sort of major capital expenditures, which makes sense. But the RFI's that we have been getting in, we're seeing there are two key drivers and where they ultimately decide to go. The first is workforce availability. It's a key issue for everyone right now. The state of South Dakota has more job openings than they have people. It's going to be a problem for some time. And then building availability. A lot of the RFI's that come across our desks, they, they want spec buildings. They don't want to construct a space themselves. Spec buildings are few and far between in the Sioux Metro region, so we've been, we've been losing out on a number of RFI's due to that. International forces, just some geopolitical tensions that are, that are kind of raising some, raising some doubts about economic growth in the future, as well as in the Pacific region. And housing command and housing costs continue to, to go through the roof. It's still a hot market there. Any questions? Also, we, we launched our website a few months ago. We'd love it if you checked it out. Give us your feedback on what we can be doing differently to represent our communities and try to drive traffic to the site.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm always look forward to reading your monthly updates. I don't see one for November yet.
Oh, I thought, I may have forgotten to email that to Nate. I apologize. But I can get that to him if you can send it out.
We'll get it out. Yep.
Any other questions?
Do we have the membership rates up there?
Yeah.
Was that past membership or current?
That's current memberships for two thousand and twenty-two.
And?
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five per person per Lennox.
Right.
So that's locked down for ten years then that cost, right? Because of the census.
I, I trust Jesse, actually. That's a good que, that's actually a really good question.
He thinks it's locked in.
I don't believe it's locked in. I think it's based on A C S.
Especially if you have census every decade.
I think we, the judge puts on A C S projections. I think we have in the past.
At my, at the mayor's roundtable, I missed the last couple just because of other commitments, but it's valuable.
And I think I'll be back here December sixth when Dakota Resources presents the, the final plan for strategic planning. We're wrapping that up. LADC, really thank all of you folks in the city council for your time, participating in some of the, the visioning sessions, as well as that opening session that we had here. And the meeting, the joint meeting was really valuable to get everyone's input. Thanks to Chad for, for showing up for the strategic retreat. But I think it's really exciting. I think the board's excited to, to see the final plan. And I think we're already starting to take actions in kind of some of the major broad categories that we've selected as priorities for the next three, three years.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, to add to the sidewalk crowdfunding program.
Mayor. Several months ago, I would say probably September, if I remember right, this came up. As, for several years, we've had areas up at the town with sidewalk and without sidewalk. I think there's been a general consensus among the council, or my type here, the council has turned over a couple of times, that sidewalks, encouraging the addition of sidewalks and other pedestrian uses is wise policy. So this came up following a meeting about some sidewalk issues in a neighborhood, and council asked for some options going forward to, to make sidewalks more, a more attractive option for residents to add to their properties. So we worked with T and Hartford, looked at what their policies were, their programs, and designed this, what I call a pilot program. You know, we, I think we, we need to try this out for a couple of years to see how popular it is. T and Hartford both had some success with it, but also did not come for a couple of years. So I think if, if the first year or two go really strong, I think we should continue to really push this, because it is something that, it could be useful throughout the community. You know, over the next nine years, we've got a number of projects on our capital improvement plan. That really doesn't make sense to have these two. But there's a number of streets, a number of parcels on streets that don't have sidewalks and really should. And I, I think it's just good for overall sa, uh, public safety and so on and so forth. And, you know, this, this program would provide a way for people to either improve or replace or add sidewalks at a reduced cost.
So one of the things that we hear is there's a lack of communication. I'm curious how these other communities market these programs.
I'm not sure how T marketed. Hartford did theirs, I think only ran for two, maybe three years. And it just simply lost interest. I don't think they were doing any specific marketing plan for it. I, I think if this is something that we really want to get people to participate in, let's get it in front of them in a variety of ways. Now, newsletters, I don't think are as effective as I'd like to be. But if we were to get specific letters out to every resident, every property owner, that this is a possibility for your property, I, I think it could get grabs for really good attention.
I think those two communities, I mean, they, they went in pretty, pretty hard. And I think the majority of the towns, well, both cities got, got hit, and they, they took advantage of it. I think that's probably why it died off more than lack of need.
Yeah, it could be a big issue.
I'm looking at it like at my house, right? So I don't have a sidewalk on the west side of my property since we've moved in. So like, it looks like I could get about to fifty percent of my sidewalk paid for.
Correct.
So, I mean, why would I not?
Right. It makes a lot of sense. It, it's very advantageous for property owners to look into this program first, right? I'm saying for two thousand and twenty-two, again, we didn't budget anything. I don't think taking twenty thousand dollars out of the second penny fund is that big of a chunk of change for us. And let's see how it runs this first year, and if we need to keep moving it forward, we can either expand it or modify it if needed.
No, if nobody else takes advantage, I'll just say only three people take advantage of it. And there's still five thousand left over, then you split that extra five thousand amongst the three people to take care of it.
I do not believe that.
We should make you look into that.
Well, that's, thank you for bringing that up. That's been a hot topic since forever.
I think it's a great program. I just want to make sure, you know, it's not just this group that knows about it. We're the ones that utilize it, and then.
We broadcast it out to everyone, you know.
Upload a sign.
Can walk around and see all the.
For next year.
Works for you.
For next year.
On Jaro, you said, sorry.
We will get the word out in a variety of ways.
Can't make those little door handle things and walk around.
We actually can.
See the.
We can do that.
Sounds like a volunteer.
I'm not volunteering this thing. Hang it on their door.
It's a fairly cold time here to walk around.
Have issues with their sidewalk. Are you interested in this program?
I, that actually would work.
I would just, I would put a pole sign there. Because it seems like everyone goes there.
I would put a pole sign there.
You don't even have Facebook.
I mean, he's coming, isn't he?
That's true.
That's how well. To your point, I do have a couple of seasonal staff that are looking for some hours over the winter. And that, that could actually.
Maybe like activities, right?
Yeah. They've got some good staff with us, and they could, they could make this work.
It's like sixty degrees in December.
Right. I recommend motion approved.
So.
Second.
That was me.
Motion, I'm gonna give it to Billy. Billy's the second.
He seconded it.
I know. Yeah, motion. Motion's the second. I'm the favorite. Any opposed? All right, sidewalk crowdfunding program, pilot program has been approved. Uh, I have to see final change order for Central Basin Two project.
The only thing I have to say.
You don't want, you don't want to take this?
No, sorry. I am officially done.
Whoa.
Not with that.
Uh, so this is, we're doing a final change order first, but we have a final pay request on the agenda too for Central Basin Fees Two. They have not completed all their punch list items that have remained. We have all the lien waivers from the contractors, and then things we've been waiting for to file this job out. So we've inspected everything, everything's, we suspect, and we're ready to accept the projects.
The punch list is complete?
Yep.
As of last week, first pick.
Yep.
File approved.
I approve it.
Most approved. Second.
Motion's second and discussion on there. Uh, all right, Jerome, Paul, Welch.
Hi.
Mauer. Hi, Dory.
Hi.
Riley.
Right.
Flowers.
Hi.
Hi.
Final change order has been approved. Next, final pay request.
Uh, yeah, so this is final, this is actually the final payment to file on the job.
Most approved. Second.
Second, discussion. Flowers.
Hi.
Welch.
Hi.
Spear.
Hi.
Dory.
Hi.
Mauer. Hi, Riley.
Right.
Final pay request has been approved.
A note of thanks to Mitch and Dexter on this project. It's been a long and arduous journey. That is now complete, and we are happy to be finished on that. So thank you for all your help.
Thanks, Mitch.
Uh, to add to the CCOG redistricting agreement.
Yes. Uh, so mayor and council, as you know, with the new census numbers, we need to redistrict every ten years. We have those new numbers. CCOG has in the past done that work for us and worked out what those districts would be. I recommend continuing that route. They, they provided us a, an agreement, a third-party agreement to provide that service. They'll provide to four hours of service at no cost to us. Anytime one of those four hours is sixty dollars per hour. In their experience, it, it could go over that, but it generally does not go over than four hours. So I recommend a motion to.
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? Jerome, Paul, since you're spinning my name, I get some agreement?
No, it's just maybe a little.
Okay. On favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? Agreement has been approved. On to personnel.
Mayor and council, earlier this summer, you directed staff to draft a policy with regard to merit pay in order to better predict every board performance. That policy is included in this draft review. I don't know, I don't think you necessarily need to read through the entire Personnel Policy Manual if it is there, so I just pulled out the department section there. I did change those percentages this morning, but that's really up to the council, where you, where you want that to be, where you think that should be. I don't see anything great on the industry standard on this, but I put it at, you know, for zero thirty-three points, no increase. Thirty-three to thirty-five, a point five percent increase. Thirty-five point five to forty, two point five to over forty, a five percent merit increase. This is separate from that cost of living adjustment. Recall that, that's something I said in the budgetary process that was intended to be separate from the annual cost adjustment.
Oh, if you just have to get points.
Yeah, what is that?
So if you look at, well, what?
And what is the maximum points you could get if you were?
The maximum points you can get, like forty is forty-four. I think there's eleven questions on our performance evaluation, each with a value ranging from zero to four. So four being the best performance, zero being the subpar performance. And so taking that percentage of points or number of points on that would then correspond to an increase based on the, on the formula.
So, um, who, who are there, like, is it the department heads during the value, like, performance evaluations that delivers those points, and then are you, how are you ensuring consistency?
So department heads draft their performance evaluations, and I received a sign-off from them and me prior to delivering to the employee.
Before we approve this, could, could you run a list of where people sat this show?
I was saying. Can we have the ballot card or whatever?
Just to make sure it's fair.
Yeah, I can do that. Absolutely.
Is that something that?
Do.
Do we need a motion?
Do we need, no, I'm just wondering if that needs to be confidential. Does that need to be listed out for?
It does. Uh, we can, we can cover it in the personnel, uh, in that meeting, in the executive session.
Okay. So just handle this.
Well, I just want to make sure that the, the.
No, I agree, like.
I agree.
I agree, I just don't think it needs to be publicly informed.
We, we did discuss, and I, I think the department heads are fairly tuned in on this, that, you know, when we do performance evaluations, we don't make them overly rosy. I want them to be realistic. I want them to be something that challenges the employee to strive for that next level. So we don't, I would say we don't hand out a whole lot of fours. I think they're relatively rare. But at the same time, I think it makes sense to take a look at, you know, what would this policy mean realistically if it were applied to last year's evaluations? We can do that.
So you need a motion to table?
Oh, I recommend a motion table. So.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
I, I.
opposed? Right, that was the table for future meeting.
It's a good progress, though.
Yeah, I love it. Thank you for drafting that. Next is exec, so yes, motion please.
Second.
Motion's second, all in favor?
I, I.
Followed. All right, eight forty.
I'm gonna cover this for a little bit more. I'll wait for, I'll wait for a camera.
Are you in the office?
They're all in the. Right. They're asking a bit.
Done, we get to see your last.